All right, the time is five thirty six and we have returned from executive session where no decisions were made. We did have a chance to talk about some things and Bruce, would you like to share some ideas?
One of the, we're way behind on minutes and we have to get caught up on the minutes. So we've talked, even though Kim Parrance, who had done our zoning for years, twenty plus years, she has said that she would be willing to come in and do the minutes, you know, catch us up. And so in discussing it with Kim, she has proposed an amount per hour and we feel that would be a fair amount to help us get caught up. So my recommendation, my feeling that we should probably be looking at doing something like that.
Chuck, do you want to?
Like I said, I've known Kim for a lot of plus years and she knows what she's doing with the minutes. Something just get caught up on a temporary basis and I don't know if we have any issue with this. Okay. Yeah, I see. Be looking, I just wanted to come in and make sure that we're happy with the following, what we're doing. But again, I've run a million zoning ones and, you know, everything is informational and to a point. She should fit right in with the minutes.
I'm just writing this out so I can maybe, I can read it and you guys can tweak it if you like. So if, if this was a motion to be made, would it read something to the effect of, "We would like to offer Kim Parrance a position to assist our administrative, her admin," with the emphasis and strength, uh, strength and emphasis on catching up on the minutes, "a part-time position and with a pay scale of twenty dollars an hour?
That's what she was proposing this time. And Bruce said he had researched it, you know, and it was a good price.
It's not bad. It's, it's fair for what that's going on and then we would have to just monitor how, how she did, you know, and it's a part-time position, so we would hope that, and I don't have any reason to think it won't be good.
Yeah.
So.
Not part of that, just a question. Would we just have her fill out a thing like she does now or like she did for the zoning and just say, you know, did X number of minutes?
Well, if she did not, if she's paying, being paid by the hour.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking. So she would just turn, do you want a breakdown of, okay, I did week one minutes and it took me four hours, eighty dollars. Week two minutes for a special meeting, it took me fifteen minutes and so that's, you know, ten dollars or whatever.
Well, I guess that's really up to, that's up to the board. I mean, we could set her up on punching. I mean, even if you're letting her, you could set her up to punch at home. I mean, if you want her to track her time.
No, we, we, we don't, we don't have, have the zoning people punch in or out, so.
But she's not a punch person. She's an administrator's helper, so I mean, it's not a bad idea. Cause she'll be set up on page, she'll be set up on page, I said.
Right. She's, yeah, she's already, I never just, um.
Oh, you never got.
I mean, I, I put her on leave, but I didn't, I didn't take her out of, like, just so that she got the ability to come back and help. Cause I know she had offered to help Stephanie and so I didn't want to take her direct deposit information out of there. So I can get her back on real quick. I'm just thinking, you know, we've had several discussions about how long minutes take. So that might be an easier way to actually track what, you know, how long they're taking.
You know, I, I feel comfortable with her being honest and if, if people are worrying about somebody being dishonest, they can punch in. No, I'm just saying, they can punch in and go out to lunch. So I think Kim will sit there, listen to the minutes, type them out and, and give them to us. And I, I think it's, actually I think it's an affront to say, "Here, you have to punch in to, to do the minutes." It's not like she's in the office, she's just doing the minutes.
Yeah, it was nothing about dishonesty, Bruce. It was simply about tracking what was being known.
What I'm saying is, it doesn't really track anything. If she says, "It took me four hours," what's the difference if she says, "It took me four hours" or she punches in and punches out and it took four hours?
Well, the, the only difference is, is that a timesheet can get lost eas- more easily than something just being electronically submitted and then everybody's, she, everything's on, on paychecks and it automatically comes over and then I'm, you know.
What if, what if we would do, do the first month on, on a paper sheet like we did Assistant Fissell at the time, right? That was on paper, correct?
Oh, wait, a long time ago.
Yeah. Well, the detective.
Yeah.
That was, that was nothing electronic.
This is, this is, yeah.
Okay. So, um, I, I, I would, I think part of the concern is some of the issues we have with paychecks starting and stopping and she just doesn't want to be hurt with that.
Here's the error problem I see with this. Like say I start working on the minutes and I, you know, and I say, okay, I'm gonna work, and I work from six to seven P M. And then I go and take a break and then I go from nine to ten. You're gonna have all these punch-ins and punch-outs with no schedule. That would be the only thing I could see as an issue. I don't have a problem with paychecks for the punch-in because it's an easy way to calculate your hours. But it's clear to have, you know, minute number one took me four hours, you know, or it took me three hours and it took me minutes too.
Yeah, I, I can see a book, Chuck's right on that one. I mean, you know, there are restrictions.
But you're not probably working on straight.
Right. The only, the, the disadvantage with this is if she's going to be working at the home, she's going to have to, at that time she signed to, you know, so.
No, no different than, no different than she did with the zoning. You know, she had to bring the stuff in, sign it.
Right. But minutes she would be able to electronically submit to you, so I don't know.
Well, she, she could submit that electronically. And actually, she could, she could, she could stand, she could get this time sheet and send it over too. And send it to, send it to Elaine, cause Elaine is the department head.
Yeah, I, I think ultimately it's your, yeah, I think ultimately it's your decision how you wanna submit it. Just make sure you get it submitted.
So if I might, I'd like to make a motion to offer Kim Parrance a position, part-time, to assist our admin with the efforts that help catch up on the minutes. So the, the pay scale will be twenty dollars per second. Details will be continued to work out.
Can you take public comment?
Not yet.
Can I?
Yeah.
Is there, did you wanna set a limit on hours per week or, because if it is considered a part-time position?
I think they, I think there's, actually I think there's one in our organizational meeting, isn't there?
Well, obviously to, to tell her, I don't know, or do you expect her to read the organizational meeting?
I, I think the organizational sets, sets like twenty-five dollars, twenty-five dollars a week at the lead.
I'm just saying to let her know.
Maybe we should, maybe we should state it. Maybe we should state it. It can't hurt anything.
Yeah, really. Weekly hours.
Not exceed.
I can't see her working a full-time job and spending twenty hours, plus on ours, obviously it's not gonna be feasible.
You want to put twenty hours in there or you want to put twenty-five? I think that the, I think it says twenty-five hours on there.
Yeah, but either even working on, yeah, working on full.
She's not, yeah, it's not as to exceed, it's not she has to work that much. It just.
So you can just put twenty, I think that'd be fine, but I'd be, I'd be, if you give it twenty dollars.
Yeah, I'm not expecting her to have those kind of hours. I just, we'll have it on there, so it'll be on the record. Weekly hours not to exceed twenty hours per week. Um, and details, well, details to be worked out. In other words, if, if there's situations where thi- this, this is, this is, this can be changed. This can be adjusted, but it's a starting place and we need to have, we're hoping that it works out well for everybody. So.
I put a start date on that too.
Um, so I haven't started the motion yet, right? Or have I?
You did.
You did.
You did, that's what we, we.
You don't, you don't.
For a restart. Can I, can I, would it, is it easier for you, Chris, for me to restart this?
Well, we haven't voted.
Right.
So you're still going. Just restate your.
I just, okay. So in summary, I'd like to make a motion to offer Kim Parrance a position, part-time, to assist our admin with the strength and emphasis on catching up on our minutes. The hourly rate is twenty dollars per hour. Details will be worked out. Weekly hours not to exceed twenty hours per week. Pay to be recorded, hours to be recorded. On paper timesheet to start. That is my motion.
Is there a start date? Is there a start date?
What's that?
Is there a start date?
Oh, thank you, thank you. That's good. I'll put one day as a start date.
For how long? I don't know.
It doesn't matter to.
Um, proposed start date.
I'm perpetual. That should be stipulated.
It's August twenty-first. You got one day twenty-three?
Yeah.
Until when?
That's my motion. Can I have a second?
Sorry.
Roll call.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
I'd move to adopt resolution number zero eight one seven two zero two three dash one one five to approve the Appropriational Status Fund by date eight seventeen twenty twenty-three and include, incorporate this fourteen-page document as presented.
Sorry.
Any conversation? Roll call.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Single purchase orders and training requests and I think I got something I left.
Um, I do have a blanket purchase order request. I'd like to make a motion for a blanket purchase order request. The department's gonna be police. It's gonna be for telephone services. Uh, it's gonna be fund two zero eight one two one zero three four one zero 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 for three thousand dollars.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Next one is, I'd like to make a motion for a blanket purchase order requisition. Department's police. This is going to be for dues and fees out of fund two zero eight one two one zero five ten dash zero 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 for a thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
I got a training request in there somewhere. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve a training request. Uh, this is going to be for Sergeant Nicholson. It's going to be SWAT team building and new tactics and legal liabilities. Uh, it's going to be located in Butterville, Indiana. Date's going to be September fourth through the eighth and it does have a cost of three hundred dollars, which is already in the brackets.
Second.
Any discussion on it?
Are we, that the cost itself is in the blankets? Is there enough in training to cover the travel and everything?
Yep.
Well, he's gonna, he's gonna take my car now.
With the hotel and?
There's no hotel.
Oh, he's not staying overnight?
Yeah, they'll, they'll be down there, but it's an actual dorm. Like a military-type base where they're training at.
Okay.
So all that's gonna be for is his sixty dollars a day, Christopher.
Oh, okay.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Want to stamp it or just sign, have a sign?
I think you sign it.
I'd like to sign this.
You want to sign? I'll sign it.
Yeah.
Be just like regular purchase order.
I got the training question.
Makes sense.
This will be for, for the department itself.
Okay, so keep up. Do you have any training request, request? Okay. Round one one six, right?
Yes.
I would move to adopt resolution number oh eight one seven two zero two three dash one one six to reallocate funds in the amount of one thousand dollars from line item two zero three one dash three three zero dash three one nine dash zero 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 zero, professional technical, to line item twenty, two zero three one dash three three zero dash three two two dash zero 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 zero, garbage and trash, and incorporate this one-page document as reference.
Sorry.
Roll call.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a purchase order requ- request. The date is eight seventeen twenty-three. The department is service. The vendor is Rumkey. The description is garbage and trash removal and the amount is one thousand dollars and it's from fund two zero three one dash three three zero dash three two two dash zero 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 zero.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Real quick on any of the utilities, things like this. I talked to Benny about this the other day, but I'll just let you all know. Now that we're getting closer to the end of the year, this is the better way to do a purchase link instead of blankets because we can carry them forward and a lot of times, you know, the, the utilities don't line up perfectly with the, the one month. So, um, even if it goes into January, but, you know, again, we don't have to close those out. So we don't have to worry about there being, you know, encumbered funds and we'll just use them up into, into twenty twenty-four. So if, if you see, you know, like electric, telephone, anything like that getting, getting low.
Yeah, cause I think you and I had talked earlier, maybe once last year, like somewhere like towards the end of November, just even opening up a blanket for the telephone service.
Purchase order.
Purchase, sorry, yes, a purchase order. That's what we talked about. Opening up a purchase order at the end of the year, just to make sure that we cover January. That was.
Yeah, yeah, and like I said, I mean, you can, if you go a little high, it's okay because you're gonna, you are gonna use that off. You know, things like electric, gas, garbage, things like, you know, telephone, so, um.
Otherwise, you lose it at the end of the year.
Use, use it or, or lose it or have to adjust out.
Right.
But with these, you don't have to worry about that. So if you see those lines getting, getting low, that's how I'd encourage you to, you know.
Thank you. Just no more purchase order than training request. I would like to move to adopt resolution number zero eight one seven two zero two three dash one one seven to approve accounts payable dated eight four twenty twenty-three to eight seventeen twenty twenty-three with digital check number forty-one dash twenty twenty-three and physical check numbers three two nine seven one to three three zero zero one for a total amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars and fourteen cents. And incorporate this one-page document as presented.
Second.
So there are a couple things. Um, so I know Sergeant Johnson just opened a blanket for telephone, but we did have imperfect voice and data bill that came this, in this accounts payable period. They had, um, and I don't, I think Chief Minnick might have been out this time, so Sergeant Zeta had signed up on this, approved it. But there was not enough encumbered funds for this, to pay this bill. We were about eighty-six dollars short. So it was approved, but I, again, I mean, I don't, we've, we've had this conversation, I've more than twenty times at least, you know, and I'm, it's like I'm beating a dead horse here, you know, like, um, there were insufficient funds. So I don't know, you know, I'm gonna leave it at that, cause I'm sure everybody is sick of hearing we talk about this.
Currently, that's not been paid.
It's not been paid. It's, it's not, we, we just got it, so, you know, there's a thirty-day.
Grace.
Yeah, we can talk about that. Um, we also received a bill from the audit, like, the Perry and Associates, right? Um, and for the, for the A D P. And, you know, I know Doug, we went back and forth a little bit about this, but the, there was no purchase order pulled because when that contract was signed, there, there was kind of out of my hands. Nothing was done at a meeting and then there was no purchase order pulled for the audit. So I don't know how the board wants to handle that.
I would say it sounds like A, um, we have two options really. And one would be to see if you had funds available to pay it and we would do it then and now. Or B, we would just issue a resolution warrant to have you pay it. Those are the two, only two options to pay the bill, correct? We kind of learned that with the North Bayway.
I mean, that's right. I just, I just, I feel like we, again, we keep having these conversations with, with these, and, and it's, yeah. And it's frustrating for me because I don't know, I, I don't know how else to communicate this. Like I, I, I know mistakes happen, but when it's happening.
Yeah, but this one is audit, which you're kind of like in charge of. That would've been a way to say, hey, we don't have a P O.
Chuck, I wasn't in charge, I wasn't in charge of it. I didn't sign that contract. It was taken out of my hands, so you can't say, that's, that's not fair.
No, well, I mean, because I actually didn't know that we didn't have one from, from there. I figured that was already part of the whole process.
Had, had I, the steps I would have taken would, would have been to bring that contract in front, in front of the board and have a motion made to, to allow me to sign the contract and then pull the purchase order. That's the steps I've taken.
So here's where we're at today. We have to, we have to pay the bill. So I think there's only two options to have. It's the same amount that was prescribed in the proposal, correct?
Yes. I think, I don't know. I, I don't know because I didn't get the proposal that was the proposal that.
You, you, you would have the same proposal that everybody got and you would have, you would have had it first.
Well, I mean, so we're talking about, what, a year and a half ago. Maybe I did have it, but I'm just like you said. I don't, I don't know, cause I didn't sign the, the contract, so I'm not, I'm not gonna speak to something that was, what, a year and a half ago.
Do you have a dollar amount available?
Three thousand.
Thirty, I think thirty-four, thirty-four fifty.
All we can do at tonight's meeting and make it more presentable.
Yeah, I.
Let's, let's.
I thought I was running here, right?
Exactly.
It may have got stuck in one of the folders.
We'll, we'll put the Perry and Associates invoice out and tell.
Yeah, I just, so this is the thing. I mean, we're, we're really at, you know, across, I, I just don't, I don't know what else to do. I mean, with, you know, the perfect voice and data, but this whole, it's like, I don't know how else to keep having these conversations though. You know, I, it's like.
I think it comes back to, I'm, I'm sorry, I mean, chill, chill.
No, it just, it just keeps happening and like I just don't, you know, I, I mean, I know they're legitimate, those are the township. You know, so that's, I'm not, I'm not arguing that fact, but it is, it's so frustrating for me because we, legitimate or not, there, there are rules to follow. The, you know, the state has guidelines on this and it, it's not right to keep asking me to, to overlook those rules or to do something that, I mean, I've explained this over and over. I, I don't feel like this is the right thing to do. I mean, it's.
No, I, we don't, if there's options out there, you can let me know what you think those might be. I, I think that what I look at is that it's communication and we need to continually be diligent to pay attention to these and not just sign stuff, authorize it without being funded. That being said, there's people involved, a lot of people involved, and unfortunately, there's gonna be mistakes whenever you have people involved. So I think when you make a mistake, try to figure it out and try not to have the same people making the same mistakes all the time.
Well, by time, the thing is, is though, is by the time this was signed, it was too late. I mean, it, it was also, I mean, so the approval itself was, was wrong, but I mean, when you're getting that low, that, that shouldn't happen. I mean, I, you know, you know, like, these, these bills don't change. This has been the same for probably the better part of two years or maybe.
Well, it's all going, and as of right now, we're at thirty-three percent that we used, you know, for yearly expenditures.
Year-to-date, but you have to look at your encumbered balance. You still have quite, you had forty-five hundred, I believe, on encumbered?
Right, but I'm just saying, it, it might not have jumped out to replenish that when you're only at thirty-three percent of what you, you had and you're at the halfway mark. So you would think that the four forty-six would have been enough in there. I'm not saying it's good that they, they signed it. I don't think this is the one that Zeta had looked at.
Correct.
So we'll just have to point this out to Zeta that.
Right, I mean, he's, I think as a trustee, he should know that, you know, he, he should be more familiar than most with this, right? I, I just.
You're, I think your point's very well taken. Okay, we're not gonna resolve anything else discussing it further tonight. I, 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 am I?
I just, well, I.
I, I, I hear you, I really do. And I think we need to communicate and work together more, all of us in our departments, to minimize that, but, but there are people, there's gonna be mistakes and, you know, result.
And I am, I am completely, I don't expect perfection. I just, it's like, I feel like, like we can have the conversation as much as we've had it, but the mistakes need to be minimized.
I mean, really right now, it's one thing with the telephone. The, the audit was one that, that anomaly, that, that's, that's over a year and a half ago, that was the, so we're just keeping them.
Uh, there's a motion on, um, oh, not the roll call.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Oh, one other thing, okay, actually, Chief, were you gonna bring up the Voyager?
Yeah.
Were you gonna talk about that?
Yeah, that's being talked about.
Okay, one, so just one other thing, you, I'll leave you to that, the Verizon bill? Um, I don't know how many tablets the police department has right now, I, when, when you were getting rid of the old cars, were you taking the tablets off of Verizon bill? Or is somebody in charge of that?
We're switching to tablets, we were taking them, putting them into new.
So how many tablets should there be?
So the only, the one, the only one that should be on there for a new tablet should have been mine, and that's it.
Okay, so, the bill actually shows two new tablets, and then it also, it's, so, so it shows two new tablets, and then there's also, like, just a random tablet P D. Then it shows tablets for cars six, three, four, five, and then a tablet for engine six, does that make sense?
No, that is not ours, that is fire department.
Okay, well, that's, so, because the- But, yeah, but see, this is being, this is being approved by the police department, so I'm the, like, I'm handed this, and I'm paying it as a police department bill, so that should, you know, we've got to get this-
You know where it's at, and, we know it's ours, and we know it.
Yeah, well, right, but you don't wanna have it come out of the wrong car.
True.
Because we can't, we can't pay-
So we should have two different phone numbers on there.
Right, we, because we're, we're paying now part of fire out of, or, yes, fire out of police money, and that can't, we can't do that.
So you'll have to, you know, just clarify that with Chrissy, 'cause she will write the number on there for us, and then we'll just sign it, each person will sign it next time.
And we just wanna find out, and then, if, if, Chief, if you want, if you can look at this and make sure that these, you know, you're, that you're being charged for the right number of tablets, 'cause I have no way of knowing what tablets are on what cars, you know, um, who's, who's who, what's what, I, I don't know how many we have now, you know, so.
Has it been broken down before on, um, previous files?
Yeah, they're in there, I just noticed it creeping up, and I know they, I, I know the police got them, yeah, but like, you know, how would you write the number?
I, I usually go off what, you know, what the, what the last checks were. So this first time is on here, or is this new, or?
No, no, there's, no, it's been on there, I just nu- noticed it creeping up, so I really, like, I went through, I mean, I always look through to make sure there's no miscellaneous charges, but I real, I went through and looked at which cars, and then I see these two new tablets, and so I mean, I went page by page, and I mean, there, there hasn't been any miscellaneous charges, but I was looking at what their label this time, and I, yeah, so, I just don't want anybody charged for something they're not supposed to be, so. No, no, that's paid, it's paid, but, you know, we might have to do some warrant reallocations on that, so.
Do old business?
Yeah, I guess that's, it's our old business, so, the last meeting, we made a a resolution, and we had some changes and some talks, and we also worked with council, so I would like to make a motion to rescind resolution number zero eight zero three two zero two three dash one zero six, a resolution to accept the retirement letter from Officer Matthew Ventura, that was passed on Thursday, August third, twenty twenty-third, during the Medina Township procedure, regular week.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
All right, so that, Chief, present this back to, uh, council, and then this is going to, um, you know, clarification, so this will be resolution one one eight. This is a revised resolution to accept retirement fire, effective, I would move to accept resolution number zero eight one seven two zero two three dash one one eight, whereas on Thursday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, Chief Minnick received a letter from Officer Matthew Ventura, formally announcing his retirement to the Medina Township Police Department, effective September first, twenty twenty-three, and whereas Officer Ventura requested in his retirement letter the opportunity to utilize his accrued vacation sick and personal time from July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three through September first of twenty twenty-three, Officer Ventura shall receive an additional sixty-eight point two hours of accrued vacation time and fifty-one point seven hours of accrued sick time that was due to him from February ninth, twenty twenty-three through September first of twenty twenty-three, and whereas Officer Ventura submitted a request for his opt-out payment from January first of twenty twenty-three through September first of twenty twenty-three, pro-rated in the amount of three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and eighty cents, whereas the board extended Officer Ventura's retirement congratulations, number zero eight zero three two zero two three, but having, um, it necessary to clarify the payments stated in said resolution from which Officer Ventura is eligible in relation to his retirement, the board rescinded resolution number zero eight zero three two zero two three. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the board trustees in Medina Township that section one, the board hereby accepts the retirement letters attached to this resolution from Officer Matthew Ventura, effective September first of twenty twenty-three. Officer Ventura shall receive an additional one hundred and nineteen point nine hours of accrued time that was due to him while on injury leave, and shall be allowed to utilize this time from July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three through September first of twenty twenty-three. Officer Ventura will receive payment for any unused accrued time after September first of twenty twenty-three, and the pro-rated opt-out payment is in the amount of three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and eighty cents. It is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this township concerned in relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of the township trustees, and that all deliberations of the township trustees and any of its committees that view all of these such formal actions were in a meeting open to the public, in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one two one, point two two of the Highway Code. This resolution shall be full force, effective from immediately after its adoption.
Second. I don't think that happened before, so, just clarification, at least, what this was about.
So the, have you spoke to Mark Kerwick to make sure that there's not gonna be any picking up of the insurance? Is that, medical mutual is retroactivating, retroactivating the, the cancellation?
That's not what Mark, I, I got, I talked to Mark, but he said that it's retroactive, and so, nothing has changed.
Oh, I have confirmation from medical mutual, so, I, that's-
Mark, Mark said that they weren't being that, that's all he told me, so.
Oh, well, they, I mean, they are, so, I'm telling, I'm telling you, I-
I'm, I'm gonna take that as a first notice, and I'll follow that up with Mark?
Yeah, so I'm just-
I, I-
I just wanna make sure we're not gonna get a request to payroll the dock, and then have this on top of it, because we can't, we can't do both, obviously, so just, you know.
I, yeah, all I know is what, what he told me, and what he told me and what he told you sounds like two different things, so.
I mean, I, I have an email from Mark telling me that if the termination of the issue within, this was two days ago, I believe, and said he, it said it'll be posted within the next seventy-two hours, so I don't, I don't know what he's telling you, Doug, but that's just completely not accurate, so.
I haven't talked to him last day, so, I'm just kidding, you, you're just telling me now something that's new to me, so, that's all I can do.
Well, I mean-
I can't, I can't do anything but that.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about this at the last meeting, so it's nothing changed, you know?
Put it the last meet.
Yeah, nothing changed from the last meeting.
Yeah, okay, so. Anything for, for some, Chris? No, okay. Um, OTA webinar training and discussion, in the past, there's been, we've made a motion or a resolution that we would sign or talk about the ones that we're gonna take, um, and I, I, for one, would like to have it freed up to where, instead of announcing the ones you're gonna take, announce the ones you took, because they follow very tightly timewise, and sometimes you don't have, you know, our life changes, we can't take the one we wanted to, we might take something different.
I think that's what we did.
Is that, is that how it is?
Yeah.
That's, that's good, that's what I wanted to make, I just, I, I wanted to clarify that, so, so we're good, there's, the OTA training offers a lot, and I look forward to taking advantage of this special key.
Oh, I don't think we did a roll call on that last, um, resolution.
Please, please, have a second, I don't remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chuck made it, I seconded it.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Uh, so, continuing to do business, um, one of the Fridays that Chief and I were meeting, uh, I also had, uh, Detective Mike Euler with us, and we were discussing, uh, these flock cameras, and if anybody doesn't know about flock cameras, they're a camera that actually stationary, and it reads, uh, slice and place and stuff like that, it's, it's good for detecting either stolen vehicles, missing people, and stuff like that. Uh, and it's come to a, um, other thing here that I would, um, actually like to, a motion to, um, authorize Chief Minnick and/or his, his designate to apply for an Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, J A G program, for a flock, for a flock camera within the amount of eighty-three thousand two hundred and fifty thousand. So a little bit more discussion on this, Chief, you wanna give a little bit more clarification on it?
Yeah, this is, uh, this is gonna be for five cameras, we got them at, uh, pretty much everywhere coming into the, coming into Medina Township. They are a tool that's been around for about a couple of years now, all the municipalities and townships around us have them, they just, uh, they just allowed townships to put them up on right outside of, off of the interstate, actually. Um, and they are wonderful tool, we have solved so many cases, 'cause we're, right now, we're set up as just a view-only user, and Detective Euler, um, just last week, him and I, we were working, we were trolling, and he got a, an alert on a warrant that he issued off a domestic violence case, and the alert, uh, got picked up right at, um, uh, the city of Medina in eighteen. And so we started heading that way, 'cause we had a warrant out for this guy, and sure enough, we found him, and we followed him right into the Medina Municipal Court parking lot, he was going there because of the warrant, turning help in. And, um, also, we used it for, um, Commissioner, what is it, Colleen's case, and that's how we identified the person in that case. There, it's just a tool that it's worth its weight in gold, actually, you know, it can be used if we have a missing person, we have missing children, uh, we could use these. Okay, and the biggest thing is, a lot is, is just the safety of it, all right, like, when we had that domestic violence, and we had to issue that, uh, that restraining order, and protection order, all right, just that alone, 'cause who knows, I mean, who knows what this person was thinking about, you know, and it, it let us know, and it'll come, it'll come right up on our, right up on the phone. And then Detective Euler got an alert from a department in, um, South Carolina on that, and that's how we found out who was on, you know, writing in checks on that case when they stole the Fisher's wife's purse. And the alert came right up on it, and it was, I mean, so it's, it's a fabulous tool, it's, you know, it's expensive, this, um-
Where, where do they get put, I mean, do they get put up by traffic lights or something, or what?
They'll be put up on, on certain, on their separate, they can't go up by traffic lights, it's gotta be on a separate pole, um, that's owed out of true, actually. And we put them in, it'll be off of seventy-one in, um, eighteen, uh, it'll be off of, uh, seventy-one in Route Three. We're gonna have one, two of them on, one on Pearl and Sun, and the other one by, uh, Womer, 'cause that's where we get a lot of issues out of that, too. And then one on, um, uh, Nettleton, and, uh, right there, I mean, not these.
Appreciate you going after that, Graham.
Yeah, and, you know, hopefully, we'll get approved for that, but it's, uh, the eighty-three thousand five hundred is for, I mean, eighty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, that is for five years. Okay, so, that covers us for five years on that, so hopefully, we'll cross our fingers, and hopefully, we'll get accepted for it.
What are the stipulations, any matches, any?
No, nothing, no, yeah.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
You're bringing up the Voyager?
Yeah.
Stuff here, so, a lot of discussion, we'll do like this, and make motion, and then have a discussion. All right, so, um, just talking with Chief here again, um, uh, for Voyager, gas cars and vehicles and stuff like that, so I would, um, like to make a motion to authorize Chief Minnick to contact Voyager and have them assign new cars for each of the police vehicles.
I would second that. And the purpose of this is simply easier to-
Have the police vehicles and new police officers and all that kinda stuff.
Yeah, it's easier to monitor and track.
And we're gonna sign it to each vehicle, rest of the each officer, every one.
Right. All right, roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Have you got anything else, Chris? No, I don't. I'd like to make the motion to open the floor in public comment. Second. Uh, roll call.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
We are open the floor, if you please state your name and your address.
Do you want my age, too?
No, sixteen.
Do you go three five two three Marks Road, Medina Township. Two things, first, I wanna say the cemetery is beautiful, what you trustees have done for that, and thank you very much for being such good trustees. And number two, is it possible to make Kim Ferens a vendor, instead of, uh, you know, it's pay her hourly, but do it as a vendor, like you do the webmaster? Uh, just a suggestion.
It's a good suggestion, it's not something I had thought, I hadn't thought about.
And let me- And I'll tell you, she's very fast and very good, so she'll whip those out in no time, I know her twenty-four years.
No, that's an excellent idea, I never, never thought about that, and that's part of working to-
Make it easier on everybody.
Does that process?
For us?
You?
No, no, I mean, you'd have to ask her if she's willing, and then she would, yeah.
Sure.
Right, 'cause she'd have to have things set up.
Work out the details.
That's, yeah, that's part of working out the details, but thank you.
And that's it.
I was gonna then put one with them.
And thank you for being such good trustees.
Thank you, sir.
Take care.
Uh, Dan Tizano, five oh two on Grand Boulevard, obviously here in the township. Um, a couple of things here, uh, number one, um, I'm back here, and Chuck, I can, when you guys are talking, I can barely hear you. Is there any way you guys could, Doug, I think you were pretty quiet earlier, I just can't hear you guys very well.
Okay.
Maybe it's father time catching up with my hearing, I have no idea, but-
No, you're not alone, we're not the same.
No, but bottom line, it's just, I can't hear you.
All right, yeah, just let me know earlier, I-
Well, I didn't wanna interrupt, so, the other thing is, um, a couple of things, are, the, the thing with the meetings minutes?
Yeah.
Who is currently responsible for doing that, or who has been responsible for doing meetings minutes?
Well, Chrissy has been doing them, Angela's part of the equation, but Chrissy's part of the equation now, but they're just been so backlog with other, well, specifically public records requests.
Okay.
So, there's only so much time in a day that you can have, and we've struggled with trying, trying to do both.
Okay.
And that, that's why.
How long, that's fine, how long has this been going on? I, I, 'cause I've been a member of the township for many, many years, I just, I don't recall this ever being an issue, I'm just curious what happened.
Well, when we hired Chrissy?
Mm-hmm.
The minutes were way behind.
Okay.
And through her work and with- And through her work and with the other secretary, they got it caught up. And the other secretary was released in January. And so then...
We were, we were held up all the way back in September, though, too, not getting approved, so...
Right, Chuck, voice?
We were, it, it, even though we let go of the other secretary, the minutes were, uh, were not getting approved all the way back in September. And so we were going through the process, there was some disagreements on the wording and the verbiage and how it was written and stuff like that.
Okay.
So we were trying to, um, work our way through that, and, um, it's just basically...
That was literally September, you're right. That was September twenty-twenty-two was where that started.
Okay, I was just curious, it just, it's just, it seemed like an anomaly, I'm just curious what happened.
It might get to be an anomaly.
Right, because we were actually caught up about July of last year.
It was a short time, but, yeah.
And then we got...
So what happened with, from July of twenty-two that you guys felt behind?
It's, it's, there's a lot of detail, um, and a lot of, I, I, I don't know how to say it without it being a very long conversation. But at the end of the day, what Chuck was saying was, there were minutes presented, and at the time, we had Chrissy working on them, Nick would look at them, they go to Angela. And then at some point in time, Angela would present them to the board.
Okay.
And somewhere in that timeframe, the process stopped in the, the fact that we weren't getting them back. And there were concerns about verbiage, and there were some concerns about content. So that's why they stopped, as best I understand, that's the, the concerns of verbiage and content.
Okay, no, thank you, I appreciate that, has that, has that verbiage and content been resolved?
We're, we're, we're hoping that this is going to be resolved.
Okay.
Because there's somebody that's been doing minutes for twenty years here, in a different, in, in different capacity, in its own...
That's Kim, right?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha, no, that's...
And I think she gets along with everybody in the mix. So I'm hoping that, you know, that's gonna be a, it's not a wild card.
Yep.
I think, you know, every, everybody has a chance to be their own wild card, I'll keep that as that. But I think that this is a good step, and we've tried some other thoughts, but this is, this is a step.
Perfect, thank you, and then a follow-up to that, is there an end date on this? Because you're leaving, you, one of the things that you said, you discussed the hourly rate, you discussed the start date. But is this gonna be in perpetuity, or is it gonna be a certain end date, when do you expect, how long is this gonna be going on till?
I think, I think what we were trying to communicate was that we were trying to get caught up with the minutes.
Okay.
So I would, I would say that that would lead me to think that when our minutes are caught up, that position may no longer be needed.
Right, but you didn't, there's no, nothing stipulated in your, uh, in your proposal, or whatever you call it, resolution?
Um, I think the details...
It was temporary, yeah. Position, so, yeah.
Okay, well, you said part-time, I don't remember seeing temporary.
I think that's part of the details to be worked out.
Okay, gotcha.
But thank you, seriously.
And then, two other items here, um, Danny, did you recently mow the grass right at Waymouth, South Waymouth and Route three?
No, that's a state.
Is it, okay, cause that's this treacherous intersection, trying to get, pull out of South Waymouth on the Route three? And the grass is...
Oh, I followed the state number time, well, I don't know if I ever got...
No, they have that, it looks like, I went by it today, but it says, I drive a passenger car, uh, and it's like, a lot of people drive SUVs, and I just can't see around this stuff. And it's like, how am I getting around that? And then one last thing, so thanks, I thought you did it, I was just gonna thank you for it, but you didn't.
Yeah.
Um, and then one last thing, there's been, I've been here for many years in the township, twenty-three years, I've been to a lot of different meetings. There's been a lot of turnover, obviously, people get voted in and out of office. Are the trainees, are the, are the trustees, are you, did you guys go through some sort of, some sort of a formal training program? Or is it just kind of just thrown into the seat and...
Yeah, there, there's, there's not enough of a formal training program, I would say that. I think that after the fact, when you get into that position, you say there should be, there should be, and there's opportunity after effect to learn.
Okay.
But I also think when people wanna be a trustee, and, and they wanna come forward, there's a lot of opportunity for them to, to learn, um, outside of this room. Um, and to, to take classes and to, to listen to webinars, to find out some more of the information, as well as visiting other townships.
But it's not required, is it something that's just, it's, uh, up to the individual?
No, it's not required.
It's just different watching it.
None of us have that stipulation, it's...
Just me, I do.
Well, you don't have any educational requirements.
Yes, I do.
I, I mean, you do for fiscal officer, but I'm not saying for accounting.
Yeah, it's just different, because I've been watching the different trustees over the years, and it's just different mixes, and it's like...
No, she has to maintain training per the Ohioary...
I would think so, cause she's got financial responsibility.
Right.
But it just, as a trustee, so that's all, I was just curious, it just, just trying to figure this stuff out, but, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it. May I, may I leave?
They have recommended classes for the trustees, they have recommended classes for the trustees.
Yeah.
And so that's what we try to, we try to catch, you know?
Is it, so with that being the case, is there any way that they recommend this stuff? And that you, you hold yourselves accountable to taking these classes and stuff like that, saying, almost like, I think you were talking about the, uh, something earlier about, you, you go through the, I don't know what it was?
The OTA.
OTAs, and it's like, like you said, you get to some modules, you skip some or whatever, but isn't there something that should be kind of a standard for most trustees? Like, before you actually can vote on something, you need to have clear, uh, gone through the first five modules, then you're cleared to do it, I don't, I'm just, I don't know.
I, I think what you're saying has a lot of merit, it doesn't, it's not something that's in place today.
Okay.
But, um, you know, there's, there's situations where I haven't been through things, so I haven't been around as long, and Chuck has been, so...
And Chuck hasn't been around that long either, I mean...
Not, not long, no.
Has it been four years?
Longer than anyone else sitting up here in a trustee position.
Maybe that's what I'm witnessing, that's all, just...
You can call me, too, I got, you know?
Yeah.
Information and stuff, but again, just to keep this going here, OTAs and stuff like that, and I even talked with other people, just in general, of being new and when I got hired, you know, the business owner and all that other stuff, I, I feel like all, feel like officials should have some type of boot camp.
Yeah.
I didn't, but the state doesn't have that, but I, I learned both for that and really that.
Yeah, I just remember, since being here for a while, there's a, there were a lot of long tenure trustees, and they had this thing down to, I'm not saying anything against you guys, but it's just...
You can say it.
It's all, you guys are just new to the position.
Well, even like where I'm at now, four years compared to where I was when I first got elected, it's like the day, and that's why I also feel, you know, having tenure and having background again, you know? You know, if I be reelected again, if I do that, at least I have four years on each of my belt, and I'm not starting off as a fresh, you know, a freshman, so...
So if that's the case, you guys are all trustees, but, uh, Doug, you are the guy in the center, does that mean that you're...
It's, it's called the chairman.
Chairman, okay.
Okay, so there's a, there's a chairman of the board that is voted on beginning of every year.
Okay.
And there, you have flexibility on how you do that.
Okay.
Whether you roll it from person to person, or whether you, some townships have the same people that hold that position ongoing.
Okay.
So it's, you have flexibility based on what you as a team choose to do.
So this may be a silly question, but why would not the senior member of the trustees with the most experience be, not be the chairman?
No, it's not a, it's not, he, he has no more power than Bruce or I.
Okay.
He literally, we have to have somebody who's, uh, you know, in charge of the meetings and stuff like that.
Okay.
And also, if there's something where a singular person has to sign for something like that, he would, he would have first.
Right, but my question, why would not the person with the most experience be appointed at, or be voted into that position like yourself, Chuck? As opposed to a relatively newcomer like Doug?
I think the flexibility that anything can happen to anybody, we've talked about that, a passenger train could hit me tomorrow, or it could hit Chuck. So having people with more, you know, so that they have some experience isn't a bad thing. So don't, don't get a train out and hit me, I'm not suggesting that, but it could happen. So, that's all.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Okay, just speaking to, yeah, we're going back to the minutes, I think, um, Doug, what you said was, you know, you hit, I'm, I'm part of it. I think what we all had a little bit of, um, inconsistency with was, you know, I, I being here the longest, was used to, I'm gonna pick on Celia for a minute. Celia did minutes that were excellent, they were to the word. And, and Celia still got picked on by, by some members of the audience, you know, she left out a as or a when, you know, in some, a, a period or a comma. People would get upset. And in an attempt to try to scale that back so that people didn't, you know, they, they did, couldn't say, well, I said this exactly, and it wasn't quoted. We, we scaled that back some, and then there were, then there were complaints that there wasn't enough content in minutes. So it's, it's very hard to find a happy, a happy medium. And I think that's where I, we had some disagreements between, you know, my office and the board, um, but that's, and that's where we got held up in, in August with those minutes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
So you go Marx Road, three-five-two-three Marx Road. Regarding the minutes, I was told by the prosecutor's office, minutes are a synopsis of what is going on, they're not to be word for word. But you are, you're to be able to read the minutes and understand exactly what was going on. But you, you don't put them word for word. And also, they did away with writing a public comment, because people, certain individuals would use it as a platform and go on and on for forty-five minutes to an hour, and then expect those words to be put into the minutes. And we were told, no, you don't do that. So Michael Todd and the trustees then stopped putting public comment, you do public comment, but you don't have to put it in the minutes. So there's some of those things. So Angela is the last person to see the minutes, she reviews them, fixes the periods and the as and the whatever, and makes sure the motions have to be exact. If the motions aren't exact and the resolutions aren't exact, then you're in trouble. But, and she double-checked everything and gives the approval, then they were printed off and presented to the trustees for the, and you would look at them, not you, but you know, trustees would read them and make sure that everything was okay. And then they would say they're good to go, print them off, and they'd get approved at the meeting. Now how come, I don't know, and when I left, the minutes were good. Our payroll was good, our approvals were good, everything was good. So I have no idea what the hell happened after that.
Can I say?
But that's all I have to say.
Can I speak up?
Sure.
Okay, here's my take. So I started here, minutes were behind, I helped get them ca- caught up. Then, um, in the whole process of sending it over to our fiscal officer, let's say, I caught them up till like the end of November, okay? Then came December, there were a lot of heated discussions in December, you can refer to the audio right now for that. And there was not enough content, um, in a lot of the November ones, there was a lot of heated things going on. So, I don't know why my minutes were not liked. So then I went back and redid them, cause Angela asked me to. And then I was starting to put everything in there, because I was like, I'm doing these minutes, and I'm doing them over again, because she said to do them over again. Well, then they sat. And they sat, and it took a while for everybody to approve them, and there was more heated discussion on why they weren't being approved. Um, I'm just being honest, I was kinda caught in the middle of it. And then comes December, I, the last ones I was working on, I'm still, I haven't been back to them, are December eighth. And then, um, I took over secretary's position on January twenty-fifth. Uh, a lot of things came in, you mentioned public records requests, we've been very bogged down with them. So therefore, I cannot get to minutes where, you know, there's a lot of things going on, and I think people should know about it. Uh, public records requests are probably exceeding, I would say, over a hundred since January twenty-fifth, since I have taken over.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Thank you. Oh.
So you go again, Marx Road. Who is sending in all these records requests, am I allowed to ask?
That I don't know.
You can, you can...
You can request a law, isn't it?
You can request a law.
I understand.
I can get that to you.
Yeah, I'd like to know who's sending in a hundred records requests, and what are they?
Yeah, for what purpose?
Yeah, what's the purpose of them?
All kinds of stuff.
Okay, well...
You name it.
I would like to say thank you, because what you said, Celia, was something that was said last year, that the minutes do not have to be word for word.
No, they don't.
And, and that was discussed very heatedly, so, thank you.
And the purpose, the prosecutor told me, you don't put word for word, because then the trustees are using it for a political platform, or the fiscal officer is using it for a political act, or individuals in the, in the audience, they want the political, you know, and, and keep politics out of this. We have three good trustees now, you, I think you're doing a good job. I was here twenty-four years, if it wasn't for one trustee, I would still be here, and she knows who I'm talking about. So anyway, you just do the best you can and get a, if you, get a, uh, an opinion from the prosecutor again on minutes. But that's what I was told.
Yeah, thank you.
You're up, and Michael Todd, who's in turn, too.
We're hoping to work that out.
No, this was done before my...
Yeah, go.
We're moving forward, at least now with Kim, but before, right?
I don't remember.
Make a motion to close vote again, huh?
Sorry.
No, don't be sorry, okay.
I'll second motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Eastwood?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
I know.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Alright, Mr. Johnson, do you have any?
Uh, just real quick, uh, we had an LST meeting this morning, the chief and I attended it, uh, a lot of good information coming in there. Uh, again, the biggest topic that we've been talking about is the non, um, life-threatening PMS transports. We're trying to, uh, knock those down. Um, we're working on some resolutions and some verbiage, uh, with the city and with Motville.
Yeah.
So it's looking more positive. Um, and there'll be more information once we can, uh, get some feedback from the, from the nursing homes, the assisted living, and maybe some other, uh, transport companies in the medical field.
Excellent. Chris? Just a couple of quick things, one, um, we got contacted by the Women's Country Club, and, uh, they're gonna have a Labor Day kids' party, pool party. And they asked if the township would be considered some kind of representation, and they were hoping for a fire truck. I told them I'd bring it to the board, and we talked. Um, I think it's important, before we would agree to that, would be, A, we'd have to have somebody staff around it. We'd have to know that Rita was okay with the insurance and the things, you know, liability wise. Um, and even though we have a fire truck that we can drive over there, I, I don't know the condition of number seven, or whatever truck that they put back there.
The conditions, yeah, it isn't drivable, but, I mean, I still wouldn't recommend kids using it as a playground, you know? But to see it and touch it, whatever, I don't see any issues with that.
Isn't that the one you choked the insurance off of, though?
There's no insurance, no, it's not on, you, you thought it was on, but it's not, too.
Oh.
Certain insurance is off, but the liability is on.
I won't be around, so...
Yeah, I'm not gonna be around either, I don't wanna volunteer to do it and find out we're not around, so...
Oh, public comments, I suppose, isn't it?
Alright, well, something...
Okay, just something to think about, Labor Day, we hear before we know it.
Insurance doesn't want kids in the trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Remember that, remember?
Yeah, um, the insurance does not want kids in the trucks.
Oh, I, I agree, that's, that's why I said we talked to the insurance and find out what the parameters were.
We were told all years ago.
That's why we didn't go on parades as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, the other thing I wanna say is that, you know, for those who don't know and might hear something, it sounds, I, I can't be complimentary enough to the job that Chrissy's doing, you know, when you were, you brought up how minutes have kinda fainted. She's done an absolute wonderful job, given the environment she has to work in. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart, I've been accused of being over-nice sometimes, and over-complimentary, and absolutely positively, I'm telling you, I'm not being over-complimentary here.
What environment are you referring to?
Um, we're referring to the public records requests.
Okay.
I mean, she said a hundred, and I promise you, that's when you take a public records request that has ten or more items within it, you see what happens to that hundred, right? So my, my point there is, she's been working really as much as she can with legal. And because so many of these have a tie, it's, you can't just flippantly go through something, it takes thought. Sometimes it takes going to our IT people, and sometimes it's, you go, you work through it to a point, and then you realize, this is getting too big to do it manually. And, and then you go to the IT people. But we do have a purchase order in place for using them, it's just, uh, it's, it's a complicated process, unfortunately. And, and, and that you've only got so much time, so, I, I just want you and whoever's out there to understand that, from my perspective, the office as a group is working, I mean, Elaine's right there, too, when, in support, it's not, it, it, I'm very encouraged, and I would hope that all four of us would likewise participate in resolving the public records request.
Thank you for your clarity, no, I, I was just a question, it had to be asked.
Well, I, I just, I don't like leaving something that could be perceived in another fashion.
Thank you.
So that's my, so with that...
And Chrissy and Elaine, Elaine really has, in this new role, she has stepped up, I don't think she's ever seen an appropriation status report, and she's really done a great job. Are you done?
I think we're done.
One thing, um, just real, there were, there's been notes in the payroll system, and I know I mentioned this last week, so real quick, uh, just please, if you're gonna put notes, put, put a little note, not just your initials, like, just put a little note of why to remember in two years, you're not gonna remember.
Are you talking to me?
Well, I am today, but it wasn't, it was just CJ, CJ.
Well, it was just his hours.
Yeah, so just a little note of why, cause if, with audit comes, you know, if they ask why, you know, just...
Funny story on that, cause I talked to chief, you know, cause chief's salary, it doesn't matter if he works or anything like that, and I said, you know, so I put in here, you know, that, that you, you work, but he works all the time, so I just, you know...
But if you're, okay, but again, remember, if you're gonna make a change on something, and the auditor wants to know why you changed in there, it's...
But it did say, add a work shift on there, I mean, that's what it was, it was added a work shift. So it should, in the forensics, say, add a work shift, and I put CJ, CJ, that I proved that that work shift done, or so. It wasn't anything changed, it was just putting in there, that's his hours. He used to be able to do that himself, then all of a sudden, it, it doesn't work. So for him to put his, right, chief, it doesn't...
Yeah, I used to have an actual time card in there.
But he can't, he doesn't have that anymore, so...
Um, I, I don't, I can't speak to that, I know, no changes have been made, so, um, but it's...
Yeah, he's completely, he can't edit his own stuff, so...
But that, that actually makes sense, cause really, the manager should, you should, the, the hierarchy should be, you know, so, that's all, that's, I just wanna remind you, so...
So, that, I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Second, roll call?
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
And I adjourn this meeting, it is six forty-seven PM.